I'd like to reconvene the public session. Will the city attorney please report on actions taken in closed session?
Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action in closed session.
Thank you, Colin. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Sullivan. Michelle, are you going to do our invocation for us?
Hi.
Great, thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Colossians 1:9 and 10 says, and this is what I've been doing, "We have been praying for you and asking God to give you the knowledge and wisdom needed to do what is right and live a life that is worthy of the Lord and to please Him in every way." Would you pray with me now? Lord gracious God, loving Father, we bless you tonight for all the wisdom and strength and every good gift that comes from you. We invite you to be here tonight, to be present, to be known. Show your goodness, your grace, your knowledge, and your power. May this meeting tonight bring unity and may your good purposes prevail. Thank you, Lord, for this gracious community, for this council that you have called together, for a city that cares and stands for what is right and good. Lord bless all who give of their times. For everyone who is here tonight, bless them, Lord. Please bless Mayor Newton and this council, your city staff and leaders. Bless our law enforcement and firefighters as they protect and serve us. And Lord bless Horstown USA and God bless America. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Michelle. Always good to see you. Okay, so we have a special presentation tonight. This is for the Legends FC Girls 2014 Team Recognition. 2014 doesn't seem correct on that.
That's correct.
It is correct.
Yes.
I'm always running behind. The Norco City Council would like to recognize Legends FC Girls 2014 Flight One Soccer Team for their unwavering teamwork, and we want to congratulate you all on your accomplishments this year in achieving the opportunity to represent Southern California in Sacramento in a series of tournaments at the 2025 California Cup. I'd like to invite Team Managers Sandra Gomez and the Legends FC Girls Soccer Team to come up to the well here. I'm going to hand you a presentation. We'll get some photographs and we'll also have some...
He's actually the general manager. He's probably the best.
Would you like to say a few words first?
Yes, please.
And let me hand you that. We're all going to gather behind here.
Is he going to go first?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, perfect. It moves.
Are we doing that right now?
Yeah, we can.
Sandra got nervous, so. No, we're super excited. Thank you, City of Norco One, for having us, and thank you for providing such a beautiful place where we can train every day and provide so many kids with so much joy out there. It's the best facility and one of them in the country and for sure the state. If we didn't have that facility, these kids couldn't train every day to be the players that they be and keeps them doing what they love to do every day. So, City of Norco, thank you for providing such a beautiful location for us to train.
Thank you.
This will be pretty nice to take. Is there a... Thank you. Appreciate it. First off, we'd like to thank our coach, Will Lopez. Will, can you stand... Or you want, please come up here too? You can bring your daughter too. Come on up. Come on up. So, Will, as humble as he is, he is the heart and soul behind the team. He dedicates so much time to these girls. It's not only on the field, but it's off the field. He cares. He truly cares about them. He's tough as nails on them, but he understands what it takes for them to stay committed, disciplined, and to get to the next level. We're super proud of this group from Legends FC. It's a group that we see have a bright future to go to the highest levels of soccer and compete at the, at least the collegiate level. But most importantly, they're fantastic people, committed and dedicated to their sport and each other. They're friends and family off the field, and we couldn't be more proud of them. So, let's give a round of applause for the girls. Huge thank you to our manager, Sandra Gomez, who keeps us online, keeps us scheduled. I found out about this today because I don't really check the play metrics too much, but then a message came out. But she keeps us in line. She sets up things like this with the city. She schedules everything. She keeps us busy every weekend. We haven't had a tournament... We've only had two this month. That's rare for this group. But huge applause. It takes a village, they say, and Sandra is the leader of that village to keep us going and keep these kids active. Let's give Sandra a huge round of applause. And to our just wonderful parents, girls, you know, without them, without their support, without them driving you all over the state and the country, and we leave for Utah in a few weeks to represent Norco and Legends, and our group is truly special. There's a lot of dynamics that go into youth sports, as we all know, but our group is like family and we don't take that for granted, and we have the best parents out there. Let's give them a huge round of applause, girls. Yeah, so again, thank you so much, City of Norco, for having the girls and us, and we truly appreciate everything you do, and we're truly proud to be a part of this city. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. You guys want to do some pictures? You good with that? All right.
Squeeze together.
And smile this time.
Everybody smile right here.
One, two, three.
Gotcha.
Congratulations, girls. Good luck in Utah.
Congratulations again. A big applause. All individual. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Can we get a picture with that scarf?
Oh, okay. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You're almost batting a thousand maybe, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Zorro, come here.
Thank you all again.
Thank you for your service.
Frank, will you be doing this presentation?
I will.
Okay. This is Frank Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers.
Good evening.
My presentation won't be as cute as the last, but I'll try to make it. So, yeah, again, my name is Frank Martinez, Supervising Fire Marshal with Riverside County Fire. I have my colleagues here, both Kylie and Michelle, to assist me with any questions that I may not have an answer to. But as you said, Mayor, we're here to provide a presentation on the fire hazard severity zone maps that the state just recently put out as it relates to local responsibility areas. In order to get a better understanding, I'd like to go over a few terms. For this presentation, one being fire hazard severity zones, these are basically areas that the state has identified as having a risk of wildfire. They're categorized in three different categories, moderate, high, and very high. These are based on fuel loading, slope, topography, fire weather, and relevant factors such as wind that may be a major cause of wildfire spread. The second term is State Responsibility Area, which is, in other words, SRA, is a legal term defining where the state has financial responsibility over wildland fire protection and also prevention, whereas Local Responsibility Area or LRA are basically incorporated cities such as Norco where the local agency bears responsibility for wild protection, usually being the city fire department. Some key legislation that brought us to where we are today, Assembly 337, which was passed in 1992, originally required the state to identify high fire, I'm sorry, very high fire severity zones in local areas. And this was primarily due to devastating fires such as the Panorama Fire in San Bernardino and also the Tunnel Fire in Oakland Hills. Subsequent to that, Senate Bill 63 was passed. This was a result of the Palisades, yeah, sorry, the Palisades Fire in 2018, I believe, which was passed or amended, amends the government code to expand from the very high fire severity zone to include also moderate and high zones. This expanded the responsibility again to the local agencies imposing state mandates. And lastly, Assembly Bill 211, which was just passed in '22, requires local agencies to adopt the moderate, high, and very high severity zones designations within 120 days of the Office of the State Fire Marshal's recommendations. One key element to remember is that local governments cannot downgrade the state designated hazard levels, but we are through adoption able to increase the severity zone if justified. Key dates to remember, the legislation placed responsibility on the state to generate new maps which included, again, moderate and high along with very high in revised maps. These maps were released in March of this year and were available at the same time to all the public. So, all agencies were able to see them for the first time this past March. The maps should have been made available for review and public comment in April of this year, April 23rd to be exact, of which they are available through the city's website for view. Now, these maps must be adopted through local ordinance by July 22nd of this year and subsequently forwarded or presented to the Board of Forestry by August 21st. So, here we have a depiction of what was previously required of the state to identify within local responsibility areas, which were very high. Here in the map to the right, you have the very high fire designation, which again, at the time, was the only requirement. Now coming into effect with these assembly bills are the requirements of moderate, which are in orange to your left, and also the moderate, which is in yellow. As you can see, very high has increased significantly with other areas centering the city and then additional areas of very high fire to the southwest. Here we have just a bar graph illustrating the amount of acres that have been identified by the state, whereas before, the prior map showed 600, I'm sorry, just over 800 acres of very high. It now includes just over 2,000 acres of very high. And again, included now are moderate and high fire hazard severity areas with high just a little over 800 acres and moderate with just over 1,000 acres. Now, these classifications are based on terrain, topography, vegetation, and fuel conditions as well as fire history and frequency, climate, weather patterns, and also amber...
Amber casted.
Amber casted, sorry. Obviously, embers are what really spread the fire or contribute to the spread of fire, so they added that to the model as well. One element again to remember is that these maps identify a hazard potential, not necessarily the immediate risks. They do not include, they do not factor in mitigations efforts such as defensible space, fire resistant construction, or even local fire department capabilities. So, some of the items that are affected for each hazard are indicated moderate. We just need to adopt the map and identify where those areas are located. In high, again, the map is adopted identifying which areas are high. Chapter 7A, which is a what's called WUI standard wildland urban interface construction requirements, if you will, which hardens the structures as well as hazard disclosure, meaning that the homeowner or selling agent would need to, well, report what hazard that property falls under. Very high obviously has the most requirements with all those items in high and moderate to include also CEQA, safety elements that the city would have to review, as well as some of the Title 14 defensible space requirements, and again, hazard disclosure. So, what does it mean for the residents of Norco? If your property falls within a high fire severity zone, that means you'll need to maintain 100-foot defensible space around the structure or to your property line, whichever is greater. You'll also, they'll also need to ensure that new construction and some renovations adhere to the WUI standards and building codes, and they would also, again, need to disclose when selling the property through an AB 38 inspection. Lots or properties within a high fire area would also need to do all the items required in very high with the exception of the 100-foot defensible space. Now, this picture here depicts what that 100-foot defensible space entails. Zone zero is what we want to consider the non-combustible zone. So, within zero to five feet from the structure, we want to ensure that there's no combustible elements, removing trees or hanging branches or even any combustible construction, whether that be combustible patios, patio furniture, and so forth. Zone number one would be five feet to 30 feet, and you want to have separated vegetation or sparse vegetation along with irrigated landscaping, and your last zone, zone two, beyond the 30-foot, would be natural thinned-out vegetation. Now, the, what's called the AB 38 real estate inspections are inspections that have been required as of 2021 in which a seller or a seller of real property located within a high fire or very high fire severity zone is required to provide the buyer with documentation stating that the property is in compliance with the defensible space requirements. At this time, the county will be handling these inspections. We understand there's a huge jump in the amount of very high fire, and so we'll be taking over those inspections to limit the impacts to the city. Modification of the maps that have been put out by the state. So, again, through the adoption process, we can make the map more restrictive, but we can't make it less restrictive. We can't adopt a less restrictive areas that the state has recommended, but we can certainly increase from moderate to high or very high. The only factor being that if we do move to change it to a higher or very high, A, we would need to justify with substantial evidence on why it's needed, and in addition to that, those areas would need to comply with the defensible space requirements and also the new construction or renovation requirements. Here we've provided three links, one for our website, providing a little bit more information, another website is the CAL FIRE. It's more of like a questions and commonly asked questions type of thing, and then also the site to the California Department of Insurance, which in turn also has several Q and A type statements and answers. And that concludes. Any questions?
Thank you, Frank.
Sure.
Does Council have any questions? Robin?
Thank you for the presentation. I do have a question, a few questions on the Assembly Bill 38, the real estate inspections. So, does this become the responsibility of the seller, working through their real estate agent, or how does that work?
That's correct. So, I'm certain that through all the documentation that's required currently, yes, you would need to provide documentation through the real estate agent, basically stating that it does, that it does comply or it doesn't comply. If it does comply, then just like any other element of real estate negotiation, you can negotiate an element of compliance by X date.
Okay. And then, I'm assuming the cost associated with that is also picked up in the transaction for selling the house, or like how did, how does that work?
I'm not too sure whether or not. I don't think we'll be charging for those inspections, but maybe one of my colleagues here does have an answer to that.
Good evening. Kylie Tullama, Assistant Fire Marshal. So, just to make sure I understand the question, the cost to the seller or the cost for the inspection?
The cost for the inspection, like where does that money come from?
So, the cost for the inspections, minimal. What we've seen so far, the real estate agent is paying for that because they go on and request the inspection. Right now, it's already happening in the SRA and other areas of very high, so on the east side of the city currently. They go on, they request the inspection. It gets sent to, currently CAL FIRE is handling it, but it's shifting over to the county. They pay the cost, and that's just picked up in the cost of the transaction. The cost for the defensible space, so say our inspector goes out there and says, okay, well, there's not defensible space. They can either take care, the seller can take care of that right away, or they can enter into an agreement with the buyer to get it done within a year and get that inspection done at that point.
Okay. Then one other question, because there's been some discussion on staffing levels, you know, for CAL FIRE and Norco and the need for staffing, like inspections and some of that. What impact, because our area that's going to need to be inspected has grown tremendously, like what are the impacts on staffing and then timelines as far as affecting like sales of properties and all of that?
Okay, so that's the bit that Frank mentioned at the, at the end. The county recognizes that this is going to be a huge impact on not only Norco but all of our partner cities. I think every city except one increased dramatically. Rather than requiring the city staff in Norco to do those, those will be handled through the county office. We already have our hazard reduction team. They're out there doing all of the vacant parcels in the county annually, and they're going to pick up these inspections. The state will still handle the state responsibility areas and will just take on those additional, and there would be no, no cost to the city.
Okay. So, well, that's what I needed clarity on, was there any cost to the city? And then, so you feel like you're staffed adequately now to be able to handle the increases, like at the county level?
Yeah, so currently, between the state responsibility area and the local responsibility area without the expansion of the areas, we're getting about 25 a week. Many of those are SRA, and so those will stay with CAL FIRE. We have the hazard reduction team, like typical weed abatement season, there's two seasons, and there's a lot of downtime in between, which they're involved in a lot of complaint inspections and other activities, but they, they will be able to manage them.
All right. Thank you.
Kevin?
So, when you say comment, what is, what does that mean? The public will comment on, what, what does that mean? They'll comment, I mean, we're used to that through other processes, but if we comment, we say it's not enough, it's too little. I mean, what kind of comments would we, would we make?
My best guess, the comment would be, in the event that there are areas that the citizens are concerned of, that maybe should be at a greater severity zone, and obviously that would be discussed amongst, amongst council and staff to push that forward.
So, that leads me to my next question. Why would we comment that way? Because we're caught between the insurance companies and knowing that we have an area that clearly, when they did our riverbed, they didn't look at the Santa Ana winds, they didn't look at the cliff chimney effect, they didn't look at all of the foliage there, and they didn't look at the lines that are already dangerous, which I know they don't. But if we rat that out and it becomes a high severity zone, it's, we're going to have all those people are going to be upset because they're, they may not be able to get insurance, which, which the insurance companies actually recognize already that it's not safe. So, I don't know how to, we're kind of caught in the middle, so.
Sure.
I don't think I want to comment. And then also the fire history. I mean, there's been four major fires, two just in the last six years in the riverbed alone. That had the wind not changed, it would have taken out two large quadrants of Norco.
Sure.
So, it says it's moderate, which is really a bizarre designation, which by the way, higher up, it's a higher designation.
So, yeah, we too also have questions and concerns, I guess. Unfortunately, the state, unfortunately, the Assembly Bill charges the state with identifying these areas, right? They didn't reach out to the locals to see what input they may have. Part of it was an executive motion decision.
Executive order?
Executive order.
From the governor?
By the governor to push these maps out quickly. That being the case, yeah, there was very little interaction that the locals had with the development of these maps. These maps weren't intended for...
These maps weren't intended for the insurance companies to utilize and, you know, make their assessments or underwriting decisions. They were really intended to allow local agencies to better perform or better make informed decisions about their land use, is really the intent. As far as why the river bottom was designated moderate, the only thing I can think of is the fact that their modeling did include areas or areas of bodies water into consideration with that designation. That's the best.
We all know how stupid that is, right? And then the last question I have, and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, you're not.
In the middle of the map of NORCO, there's an area that's a high, right there. What is that? Where is that?
That is, yeah, correct, Beacon Hill.
Now, see, that's funny, because if that burns, it burns very quickly because it's very, there's not even anything on it, I don't think, right now. But that's Beacon Hill.
So, going back to, going back to the riverbed and going back to Beacon Hill. We agree with you. We had the same concerns, why, because if you look at the riverbed, almost all the way up, it's moderate. There's one little sliver that's not. Kind of didn't understand that based on the fire history, Beacon Hill, why it's solid red. And with that, I, so I called the CAL FIRE land use battalion chief, who was responsible for this area, and kind of did a deep dive. And although I don't have a complete understanding of the modeling, because they give you pieces of the input, but they didn't give us every little input. The state used, so the legislation required a consistent statewide model. And so, then they used vegetation, right? Vegetation was one of the types. There's many different vegetation types. There's coastal scrub, there's grass, there's timber, there's all different types. But to do that consistent statewide model, they couldn't use every type. So, they used, from our understanding, without actual specifics, somewhere between three to five vegetation types. And the way Chief Barkley related to me, which makes a little sense when you think about it on a consistent statewide model. If we used this here and say NORCO doesn't agree with, oh, whatever model, we don't know what it is, but we don't think it's grass, right, for the Beacon Hill. We fix it for NORCO, then we torpedo in another area because we can't have that consistent statewide model that the legislation required. Again, don't necessarily agree with it, but that's how, going back and forth, trying to understand. Because we went round and round specifically about Beacon Hill.
Because it's another effort to cookie-cut.
It's, so the legislation required that consistent statewide model, so we would have uniform modeling. That way, if you go back to the 2009 maps, there wasn't that. And it was, oh, this city didn't want this, so they mapped that out, right? Again, don't necessarily agree with the methodology, but to add a little context to how they got there. So, again, don't know what modeling they used in the riverbed, what vegetation type. But if they used, all riverbeds have this, could explain why our riverbed ended up with moderate.
We've had fires in the hills, and they put them out fast because it burns so fast.
Absolutely.
And I could see if it was reversed.
And a lot of it is about the ember cast that the vegetation type, the vegetation model that they picked would give. So, grasses do give off embers, but they don't give off the same embers as like a coastal scrub or something like that. And that's kind of where I go back to, I don't, maybe they didn't use grass, right? And it's what that ember cast is going to do to the surrounding areas. Is it going to ignite what is around it?
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. See if I can phrase this correctly. That on the, for the property owners, their limits are to their property line.
Correct.
Correct for these inspections. So, looking at the, on your map, let's call it to the right of, on the right side of your map, it's what I'm referring to is like NORCO Ridge Ranch in our hills there. I guess go back to your overall, to your zones.
Sorry. It's moving slow. There we go.
There you go. So, on the right side where we border Riverside, and in that subdivision throughout there, all the property owners, they pay into the fuel modification of those hills. And that's yearly. And we've created that defensible space with the fuel modification that they're already paying for. I'm just curious why that wasn't, is that the same answer as why it wasn't taken into consideration?
That's correct. Obviously, there is an element of human intervention to reduce the risk. So, the modeling is just assessing hazard, the potential, if you will.
Okay. So, I don't know how to describe this area, but it's kind of. Right about there. Okay. I'll either, Amanda or Kevin, you may know. There's an aviation tower on top of that hill. Right. Why would that not be under federal responsibility area?
That's a good question. We could probably look into the state, if in fact it is federal property, and potentially be removed.
So, we can, we can reach out to CAL FIRE land use planning and see. There was another parcel on question around Beacon Hill, and we did find out that that is federal land. So, if I can, I'll go back and I'll drill down. They, the state used, and for the life of me right now, I can't think of it, the, not Board of Equalization. I can't think of it, but what data they used to draw from. So, I'll go back and I'll look. And I'll get back to CM3.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. Greg?
Yeah. You're looking at the river bottom. Let's just say, because you made mention that we can upgrade. We can't counter.
Correct.
Now, if we upgrade that, and we do that ourselves, now do you take that back to Sacramento, to CAL FIRE Sacramento? And do they implement that?
My understanding is that through the adoption process, we will be identifying those areas. Is that correct?
So, and then we can exclude all, if we do it ourselves, leave everything the way you've got it, and we just add in all the river bottom area, and put that as not moderate, but high.
High or very high?
Higher. That's not going to affect our homes that are down along there. If you want to jump in, jump in.
It will. Whatever areas that are raised in severity will have to comply with the requirements for those severity zones.
But it'll stay the same. It's just going to be just like the houses. They're going to be up here at yellow, high, and then screaming high. And when you go up here and you look at Crestview. But then when you go down to River Drive, and when you look at those, it's all moderate. But if we were to just take the river bottom as itself and put that in as high and very high, would that affect those houses?
Okay. So, kind of a, kind of going back to Councilmember Bash's, I know your name. I just can't get my words up. To his comment, yes, you can. And it's not going to affect the houses because there's no houses there, right? But from the overall perspective, although these maps are not supposed to be used for insurance, we can't say for certain, and we don't control the insurance. And we, I can give you a prime example. Michelle lives in Altaloma? Laverne. And she lives in a zip code, that the whole zip code is very-high, but where she's at is not even mapped. And her insurance just dropped her. So, they're not supposed to. And if you go to the third, the third link on that last slide with the links and the QR codes, that's a great FAQ about what mapping and what modeling that insurance agencies use. It's very similar. So, I wouldn't say that you can't do it or you shouldn't do it. That's a council decision, and that's what you guys need to decide amongst yourselves, what's best for the city. But there may be downhill impacts that you should be aware of. The other thing, if we increase to high, if the city chooses to increase to high, we don't have to do anything. We just change the map, make it high there, and nothing has to be done. If we go to very-high, we have to substantiate it with findings that that category is necessary to protect the surrounding homes. That those building, those building characteristics would be necessary. Well, there's no buildings there. I am sure we can have the findings. I'm not worried about that.
I don't want to get too high, that'll impact the houses. But at the same time, I don't want to, I mean, I'm looking at it right now. And like Kevin says, we've had fires up there, and we've got the homes, we've got the power lines, and we got all that stuff we're fighting. And we're looking at the same map that they gave us for the power lines, and we're going, it doesn't take a person with rocket science to figure out that when you see smoke, we've had over the years. I live close to the river bottom on hillside, and we're constantly getting fires down from the homas and from what all. And evidently, they don't look at your data for fires in that area. They just go by a map, and they take all that data, and they just don't look at it because there's been fires like you, you know, in the summertime, there's going to be fires all the time down there.
Absolutely.
But what I would ask from you guys, if you could do it, find out what we need to do and if it has an impact on the residents as far as their insurance goes. If you could find that out and bring it back to us, because I don't want to do anything to affect them. But if I can, if we can all agree to upgrade this, it will give us a better battle when it comes to the fire, you know, the power lines and stuff.
I can do some research, but we're not going to know if it's going to affect insurance.
It's got your name right at the top of this. That's why I'm asking.
But CAL FIRE doesn't, CAL FIRE doesn't have impacts on the insurance agencies. That's, yeah.
I don't mean to put you on the.
No, absolutely. I'm happy to look into it, but I don't know that I can answer the question or I will be able to answer the question that you're looking for. So, I don't want to give you a false sense of security that if we upgrade it, it won't have any impacts.
That'd be awesome.
Absolutely.
I get with you. You got hit with this, and we, especially Kevin, has been really big on this. And I just would like to have more, so with these people in NORCO who we represent, we can give them an actual idea of, because everybody I hear looks at that and they go, oh, that's baloney. There's no way. You know, these hills catch on fire, and they're out in the wind, and everything down on the river bottom throws ash. Everything in the hills doesn't. Like Kevin said, it's grass. But if you could look into that and get back to us on that, I would really appreciate that. I don't want to put any more work on you, but.
No, absolutely. This is our job. That's what we're here for, and we're happy to do it.
Thank you.
One last thing on that note, but we can really hold off the rest of the conversation till we have the public hearing on these maps. But when we talk about increasing the severity, let's say in the river bottom area, would we not just be limited to the property that the city of NORCO owns in the riverbed? And not the Corps of Engineers or other agencies? We own 270 acres down there, approximately.
So, the changes would only be effect to those properties within the city limits?
Okay. So, it may be a moot point, since that's county and all different ownership. So, it would, it'd just be what we own?
Correct.
In the riverbed?
No.
No?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
So, it's not just, it's, if it's within the city limits, sorry. If it's within the city limits, and it's not state responsibility area, and it's not federal land. So, if you, can I borrow your map? And you can, if you can put it on the larger screen, so, riverbed, right? Anything within the NORCO city limit, that's more than 200 and something acres right there, would be reclassified if you chose that. Or you could choose to just reclassify your, what was it, 200 and?
Approximately.
Yeah, something acres, if that's what you wanted. It's not about ownership, it's about what's in the incorporated. But you could choose just to do that portion and not, you know, the rest of the moderate all around the communities.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Frank, appreciate it. Good presentation.
Absolutely, sir.
Look forward to seeing you soon.
Certainly. Take care.
Thank you. Okay. City Council reports on regional boards, and we'll start with Councilmember Bash.
So, I think the key thing that I did these last couple of weeks was the Southern California Association of Governments Conference. The housing stuff that's coming at us, I feel sorry for Alma every time I think about it. But they see no problem, the people that were speaking, they see no problem with building ADUs and creating an HOA on the little property and then just selling the ADU separately from the rest of the property. And, but you have an HOA, so you sort of agree to where people are going to park and that kind of stuff, and you have a whole system of things. The irony of this, and I know Edison hated me the whole two days I was talking to them. They were the ones that sponsored this SCAG. And they talked about working together with communities. They talked about following the edict from the governor to underground. They talked about all kinds of things, making things safe, putting things underground, how they want to work with communities. And I got tired of hearing it, and so I was able to kind of get in the grill of the person in charge of building facilities nicely. And then also the vice president, the person just under Steve Powell, who, when Lisette and I were visiting out there, was the person that came. And they gave me their card, and so I immediately wrote them emails to say, you know, you guys talked about undergrounding and stuff like that. And they, I haven't heard back from them, so I don't know. I honestly believe that we might want to take a page out of the the recent uproar over a project to here in NORCO. And I think that what we need to do is maybe we as a city need to produce some videos and really talk about what they're trying to do over there. And I really think that's what we need to do. And I think if we take the gloves off, I think we need to just do it professionally, but really talk about the fact that we've had major fires. I think we need to call the CPUC out. There was a lot of discussion about the fire maps when I was there, and nobody agreed with them. So, I don't even know where that came from. And universally, everybody hated the housing stuff. They're very mad at the state legislature. And yet, I suspect many of the people are still voting for those people that are actually passing these crazy laws. Even people, we didn't have a lot of people from Northern California, but we had some, mainly our speakers for some reason. SCAG, I've decided, is very, they're actually trying to get people to utilize these ADUs. So, it should be, should be interesting. But I feel like there's this corner being turned on the RT RP. I just think we need to kind of now really drill down and fight. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
On April 24th, I attended the RT board meeting. And, let's see, the board awarded 26 passenger vehicles for fixed route transportation services. And they also awarded the purchase of paratransit scheduling software, which will assist with optimizing scheduling for the dial ride customers via an app or website. And they also extended the youth ride free through December 31st. And they also extended the youth ride free through December 31st of 2026. And that also includes the fixed routes and the go micro buses. And on April 28th, I attended the RCTC Programs and Projects Committee meeting and it was business as usual. Concludes my report.
Thank you, Fia. Greg?
Well, Horse Week took up a lot of my time, so I had a Northwestern mosquito vector meeting and like I said, they're just getting up on board because it's coming into the spring. So they're, they're out there, but they just lost their head scientist that went to LA. So they haven't hired a new one and they're taking applications now, so if you know anybody. But she was phenomenal and she was very good at what she did. She loved what she did and she's just not leaving. She's gonna be tutoring the new person that comes in, so she's, she still likes this area. But other than that, they're just gearing up for mosquitoes coming in and that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, Greg. Robin?
I was able to attend the city schools meeting. There are several leadership changes taking place at the school district. We will have a new superintendent starting July 1. And for Norco specifically, I believe all of the schools have finished their furniture refresh, meaning that all of the schools have completely new furniture in the classrooms. Norco High School was done last summer and then they finished up with the elementary schools here recently. In fact, Highland Elementary came and did a presentation to the school board last night about their new furniture and it is a game changer for students and teachers in the classroom with that. And I believe that's it.
Robin. On beginning of May, I attended the National Day of Prayer. That was in conjunction with the Riverside County Sheriff's Chaplains, Chaplain Ball. There were no thunderstorms or lightning, so it went off all right. Then I also had the Chino Basin Desalter Board Directors Meeting that afternoon. And then this morning, along with staff, Councilmember Bash, we met with our economic development people. So Kevin, any comments on that or just, it was just a general meeting with our consultants?
I felt better.
Yeah.
I actually felt better. I, I felt that, I feel like Kelly and Lisette are holding their feet to the fire and they, you know, I'm not sure what they do outside when they leave, but it seemed like they're, you know.
We knew they were gonna spend money in Norco, so.
The problem is, is as Kelly said, it's that middle range. They're getting the national, the big national change, but it's the middle that, that we're, we're weak, so.
That was a good meeting. And I did want to mention, this isn't an official board or subcommittee, but I've been working with this group out of LA, Senate Bill 322, and that is the Urban Equestrian Initiative. And this is just another tool in our toolbox we're hoping to develop to preserve our equestrian land use. That went through committee on April 23rd and that was on consent, so it was a 7-0 vote. It was gonna be scheduled for appropriations yesterday, but they moved it to the 12th, I believe, of May. And it may not have to go through appropriations because it's no cost type of bill. And so we'll see if it just goes right to the Senate floor. But, you know, keep working on this, that, like I said, it's a, another tool in the toolbox that we can use with our historic district and just try to keep fighting the battle. And that's all I have. Dana? Okay. We'll now go into public comments.
Mayor, there's no public comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Consent calendar. Do any members wish to pull any items? If not, I'll ask for a motion. Motion to approve?
Second.
And then a second.
Please vote.
Sam, I did want to thank you for answering those questions, even though it was a little late in the day today, to get the answers.
That was my fault.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, moving into discussion and action items. This will be item 5A and this is rate adjustments proposed by Waste Management. We'll just go over the order of presentation. This will be a staff report, specific questions, councils, council questions of staff, any public comment, and then council discussion and action. Sam?
Mr. Mayor, this is a resolution 2025-12 to adopt the rate increase for Waste Management's contract obligations. Pretty much as part of their contract agreement, they have the ability to raise their rates on the CPI every year to a maximum of 4%. They presented their findings this year, which they concluded they had a 4.4, 4.4, 4.44% increase. However, they're capped off at the 4%, hence that's what they're doing. And pretty much it's all based on the contract, all pretty easy stuff. And I'm here to ask any, or answer any questions.
Thank you, Sam. Does council have any questions of staff? We'll wait for Mark for a minute. You good? Okay. Dana, any public comment?
Mayor, I have no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to council discussion and action. Council have any comments? Motion to approve? Well, I'd like to make a comment that, I've said this before, I want to thank Council, Mayor Protem Grunmeyer, our previous Public Works Director Chad Blaise, and the Subcommittee for the work that they put forward in this contract. And for the, the benefit of the few social media Waste Management experts that are out there that felt that we didn't do competitive bidding, Waste Management was the only bidder that agreed to set a cap out of the, the five bidders that we had. And I, I think this is just gonna pay dividends where we're not subject to market conditions that when the CPI is less than 4%, if it's 3%, that's what we'll pay. If it's anything over 4%, we're capped at 4%. And we'd never had this before in our previous contracts, so I think this is, it's gonna help us down the road.
Two of the companies were at SCAG and they, we were able to talk candidly. And they were just like, we couldn't even come close to this contract.
Right.
And, and I had dinner with Waste Management and they were talking about the fact that they're probably not making any money in Norco.
They are.
I'm sure they are.
Believe me.
The big contracts are Corona and Eastvale.
Right. Okay, so Kevin, you made a motion? May I have a second?
Please vote. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you.
Good, okay. Item 5B, this is to read and state resolution number 2021-12 and I'll call upon the city clerk.
Yep. Just a second. Get myself ready. Okay. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. May of 2024, the Code of Ethics had came forward to the city council. It was discussed in much detail at that time. There wasn't a real true consensus that could be made, so at that time, resolution number 2021-12 was repealed, which removed the Code of Ethics policy in the city of Norco. And with that, the Code of Ethics policy in any local government establishes not only ethical standards for officials, it emphasizes the principles that we all stand on, on integrity, honesty, accountability, and fairness to ensure that we have public trust and transparency. Most cities maintain a Code of Ethics and right now not having one was something that was hard for me as a city clerk. I worked with the city manager and human resources. We reviewed the resolution 2021-12 again and decided to bring this forward to have another conversation to reinstate the Code of Ethics policy that will be for the city council and commission and committee members at this time. The employees' Code of Ethics will be via admin policy that will be under the city manager. So at this time, I will take any questions that you may have and I am, our staff is recommending that we reinstate resolution 2021-12 and bring back the Norco Code of Ethics.
Thank you, Dana. Does council have any questions of staff?
If, on the Code of Ethics, it's basically just all paper, right? There's nothing you can do. I mean, all you can do is censure somebody, you can't get them fired, you can't do any of that stuff, so.
With that, Councilmember Bowen, there is more that as a, because it is a peer, you're holding peer to peer, peer to peer. So I'll have Colin, do you want to chime in? But I believe you will be holding each other accountable and as a, you know, majority vote, if you do want to remove somebody from the dais that can be taken care of through, for committees and commissions, they can be removed from their commission. But on a council member's side, you can start with a censoring, they can be removed from committees that they sit on outside of city council. There are repercussions that can be taken by you as a whole.
That's correct. There you have it.
Basically exactly what you have right now, so.
Correct. But it is putting forth to our community that we are holding our city council to standards, not only our council, our commission members. It is included in the packet that they receive when they're onboarding, like yourselves receive when you just joined the city council. So they are signing that they have read it and that they will adhere to it. So at least we have something on file that our community knows that we are holding our, not only our community, our committee and commissioners, our city council also to the same standards that we expect from them.
Well, on my past experience, it hasn't worked. So is it the same bill as it was years ago? Because there was a lot of people that were, were complained about and nothing happened.
That, if I, if I may, that was from 2013 and that's why in 2021, 2013-21 resolution was repealed and 2021-12 was put into place to have a different, more extensive standards that we will be, or you will hold each other to. So it has changed since then and as you seen in there, not only is it holding, you know, the details are there regarding complying with the law, working for the common good, our conduct, you know, it's all there in writing now and is signed off by each council member or commission member and committee member when they join the city.
Any other further questions of staff? Do we have any public comment?
I have no public comments, Mayor.
Dana, bring it back for council discussion and action. Is there any further discussion? Or I'd like to make a motion to reinstate resolution number 2021-12.
Please vote. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, city council for this. This makes me feel much better.
Okay, we're gonna move into our public hearing. This is item 6A. This is a continued item, but I do have a couple of procedural questions, either for city clerk or city attorney. We had opened and closed the public hearing portion to comments.
Did we close it? I, I can't. Okay, then, then the public hearing was closed unless we re-noticed it, this wouldn't be another public hearing. This would just, we would take public comments under the Brown Act, but you would have to hear the comments and not listen to them essentially is how that works.
Okay. So I guess what I was asking for is, I know we opened and closed the public hearing, that we would not take comments from the public, but would it be allowable if we have a question to have the applicant be addressed? If such a question exists?
As long as you are getting a clarification.
Okay.
Rather than taking in new facts.
Sure.
Something that we can do.
Okay. All right. Before I hand it over to you, Alma. I just want to clarify that this is a, that we're discussing the resolution, whether we approve the site plan and the conditional use permit. And so if there's any design questions, I think that they should be, unless it's a specific, should be addressed, addressed to staff so that we give staff a clear direction. So with that, Alma? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council, agenda item 6A is, is a continued item. It's a continued item on the appeal hearing of the Planning Commission's approval of site plan 2022-01 and conditional use permit 2022-02. So the Planning Commission, excuse me, the city council heard this item at their last meeting. The council did not take action, but continued the project to today's meeting with, for further discussion on the proper conditions for the project. In a nutshell, the, the city council directed staff that resolutions be drafted to include both Planning Commission's conditions and specific, specific conditions to reflect the city's council's direction to under concerns. So the overarching concern was the proposed architecture for the project. Staff was directed that, that we draft resolutions to enable the approval of the project, but with direction that the applicant work or the project be conditioned that the applicant work with staff to modify the architectural theme to be more consistent with, with the Sixth Street desire design. In your resolutions or the resolutions that have been drafted include those conditions that were directed by city council. And in addition, we did clarify. And in addition, we did clarify the conditions for building and safety, either by adding, modifying, or just relocating the conditions from different sections of where they were for the Planning Commission's resolution. So with that, staff is recommending approval. Again, the resolutions before the City Council are City Council resolutions that include the conditions that reflect the concerns that the City Council had. And with, if approved, it will enable staff to work with the applicant directly to modify the architecture at staff level. And with that, I can conclude and answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Kevin, would you like to start with any questions or discussion on this item?
Yeah, I am, I am pleased in the direction it's going. There's some things that I, I want to see more of, which, I'm not really in favor of the setbacks of giving a CUP for that. I think it needs to be what it's supposed to be and not, not 10 feet away. I think it's too close. I don't really like the cutouts. I know across the street, you're looking at the cutouts. But the ones on the wall tend to work, but the ones that are free really don't work. The windows, I just think they need to be, they need to be segmented more because it just looks unfinished. I think some of the dormers, I'm not happy with the dormers, but it's closer. And for me, as long as the developer is willing to truly work with us, I have two concerns. One, if we sign this, Colin, are we caught again? And you know what I mean? It's like we got a project here that's eight feet too high. And it's like we're having, we're like caught. I mean, are we going to end up in a court? Are we, so let's say Panera Bread or somebody like that decides they want to be there. Are we all of a sudden, is there a loophole that they can have something totally architecturally, the antithesis of what we're trying to do?
No, they can't because the architecture has to be signed off by the planning director.
And at the same time, we want to work with them so that maybe we can find that happy medium. I get that.
Correct.
So I just don't want to end up, I mean, where we've ended up before. But otherwise, I personally think that they've gone above and beyond. I still think there's more to be done. Setbacks is a really, Alma, that's a, that's a big one for me.
This one, the action tonight approves the setback because it approves the footprint.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. So I would want to make that modification. I do not think it should be 10 feet from, from the fencing. What is the normal setback? 30 feet, Alma? 35? Do you know why they wanted that? Maybe I should have asked that first.
Sorry, because, well, just to kind of, just a brief background, that the code does make provision for 10 feet. The discussion at the Planning Commission, if there's enough architectural elements to warrant the exposure on Sixth Street, meaning that they reflect the Sixth Street design, and they can be closer than the 30 feet. And keep in mind that if, once you get into the setback, that's basically changing the site plan. So the project would probably have to go. I don't think, and this is where I'll ask Colin, you probably would not be able to approve the resolutions? Or would they have to modify the, if they're modifying the setbacks?
So if you're modifying the setbacks, then we're back, there would be, I think they would be back to the drawing board. They would have to move the whole, the whole footprint by 20, 20 feet. So that would be a significant change.
Well, for me, it's too close. That's all.
Was that allowed to just put additional artwork, landscaping? But didn't, did it move any of the buildings up?
Well, the buildings, closest one, I believe it's the inline shops, is as close as 10 feet. But that's, that was determined on the architecture of the building. So it's mostly intended for the architecture of the building.
Bea?
Well, basically, I had just wanted a clarification, which I got the answer today, just a couple hours before. But I just wanted to go over that number 80 in the resolution under City Council. It just states that, and we already talked about it here, that the final sign-off is through Alma. So it doesn't have to, the City Council does not have any final say in the final. So that's actually something that I would like to change, actually.
And I apologize. If you look at the resolution for the City Council, there's just a numbering error, and I just wanted to bring that out, that I will correct it. So that was it.
So to understand your comment that, are your, are your expectations that staff reach out to individual council members for input? I mean, we shouldn't be designing buildings. It's not our job. But how, how did you perceive that?
From what, Bea? Yeah, my, my understanding is that she, the architect worked with me in that the drawings come back to the entire City Council for approval. Is that correct?
That's what I was asking.
Yeah. And because that was based on the direction that we received from council the last time. And that's why it was drafted that way. My understanding is that was a determination that was, that was given to staff to create that condition to reflect that.
Okay. So you're still going to seek input?
The way the condition is drafted is, well, basically.
It's a no or a yes, yes or a no, I guess.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I would recommend is that the plan, as, as we saw this, as we saw it framed at the last council meeting, the applicant said, just give us an approval. And the compromise made during that meeting was, okay, we'll give you an approval. But for that approval, you have to get final sign-off of the designs from the planning director. The thought at that point was, we can't have a council, because of the Brown Act, we can't have a council meeting after that. But we can talk to two council members. So we thought what we would do is we would have the planning director have sign-off authority. And the planning director would seek the discussion with two council members individually so that we didn't have a quorum afterward. And if the two council members were okay with the design, the planning director was going to sign off on it.
Okay. All right. Robin?
So my position hasn't changed from the last time. And I think it's been mentioned here, it's not our job to design buildings. And so I am fine with the resolution, the way it's written. I have some serious concerns because I feel like what's happening right now is either, one, council thinks that they know better than somebody's professionally trained to do the job, or you don't have faith that staff is doing the job. Both of those are concerning to me. Either way. So I have faith in staff that they can do the job and do the work that they've been professionally trained to do. And that the applicant has made it more than clear that they are willing to work with us and make the modifications that we have requested. I think the other dynamic here that is tough for me to wrap my head around, and I've sat up here for a while, so I can't imagine how it is for a developer. There are five different ideas on this dais of what Norco architecture is. And when there's five different ideas up here, I can't imagine somebody trying to interpret all the comments and all of the things to develop a project that's going to make every single one of us happy. So I have full faith in staff that they can do the job that they've been asked and hired to do.
Greg?
By the way, how'd you like the bull running on Sunday? It was good? Okay. You can tell he drove around Norco and looked at some of the stuff. With all that being said, I have all the faith just by what I've seen. I'm a flat 100% yes. And Alma's gonna, there's a few other stuff, maybe the setback. I get it, but that's what was approved. And it's gotten this far along. It should have been cottoned long before this. And, and I'm going to climb up on my soapbox. And I apologize to everybody. But we want to get sales tax running in this town, but we make it so hard to push things through. And I've seen it. I've watched it. And it's just, it, the bottom line is, it all turns out the same way we hope. But we need to have more leadership with planning to go ahead and start pushing this stuff through faster. And our, and we need to give our direction to our Planning Commission, like Kevin said, more so they can let these people know what we want as far as the city. So it doesn't take two, three, four years down the road. I don't think it took four yet, but it's still way too long. And if we want to grow our sales tax up in my lifetime, we need to start pushing this stuff a little bit harder going through. And it's, we can do that and still get the end result because I think Kevin and everybody on this board has hit the nail on the head that we need to assign two people in the council to get with Planning Commission, or not planning, with a planner, and review some of this stuff so we don't get into this mess that we're in right now. I don't know if that's possible, but I do know we have a problem. And this many years pushing a project through is, in my opinion, is not, not acceptable. But I like what you guys have done. And you've jumped through hoops. And everything that Kevin has said, everything that everybody has said up here is true, but what Robin said is most true. You've got five different people, and we all have different ideas. Kevin, I know what he's going after is the round looking, but I look at it differently, and Western is square. But I love his windows. Do I think it's applicable here? I'm not an architect. But at the same time, I think we need to take a more look on how we can streamline things through with getting new businesses in our town as far as pushing them through planning. Thank you.
Bea? Comment or question?
Another comment, actually. And it's not that I don't have faith in staff. It's just things happen. For example, there's a property on Sixth Street that doesn't look anything like it was supposed to. And somewhere along the lines, I, that's one of our, our main streets. And that's where my concern is. Because it doesn't look anything like it was originally intended to.
So whose fault was it? The art, did the, did the builder or developer completely go off of what planning had approved? Or was it something, like where, where was the misstep? Or why did it end up like that?
I don't know specifically where it, it went different. But the building that is there is different than what it was on paper. And it got almost completely finished. It had the wrong roofing material. It was the wrong color, the wrong window colors.
I mean. Which one she's talking about?
Yeah.
But that's an inspection issue, correct? Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's also, there were some design elements also.
So Kevin, what, what was the issue? If it wasn't an inspection issue?
Problem is, you're putting us in a position where we had a real cluster here. And we're trying not to throw anybody under the bus. The bottom line is, this was a huge mistake. Now, I disagree that there's five of us that had different opinions. We do know that that architecture that came through was not what normally, we normally see. Something happened here. Now, if you, what you've done is you've put us in a place where we have to say, you know what, Alma? We need you to do a better job. I don't know.
Which is fine. That's not a big deal, Kevin. But beating around the bush and not having the discussion, because ultimately, the five of us can't have a discussion unless we're up here, correct? Because it violates the Brown Act. So that's what I'm getting at. Because it, as management of the city, so our city manager can take what you say, what you say, what you say. And the fact of the matter is, it's all independent conversations where if any of us can have input, that might change somebody's opinion or say, oh, I didn't see it that way. Or I had a different perception of what the discussion was. So ultimately, I think part of this goes to, there is not an allowable time for us to have these kinds of discussions and not violate the Brown Act. So sometimes there's uncomfortable conversations that need to be had. And I'm not going to not have the conversations because it's uncomfortable.
So, and I totally, absolutely, totally agree. Something happened in the process. The developer was told, he was given approvals he should not have been given, in my opinion. You had a planning commission that felt they had to approve this. I've talked to them. You have an overwhelmed planning staff who's just being inundated with stuff from every, every level. I know we've done it in the past where we have done good projects. That didn't happen this time. But I'm also looking at, CarMax almost went left field. We have Frontier project that all of a sudden is eight feet too high. We have the Palomino project that's 12 feet too high. We have all of these things. We are the ones that have to protect what we're trying to do in the city of Norco, to create place. We're trying not to put in strip malls. So ultimately, it comes to us. So yes, I agree with the uncomfortable situation, except that it's an awkward position because the bottom line is, it's the planning department where the problem is, not their fault. 200 housing bills are coming at them. There's no possible way, I mean, there's a, a project up on Crestview. I can't even believe what Alma has to do there. But ultimately, the old saying, the buck stops with us. And the truth of the matter is, is I, I totally agree with, with Greg, where we talk about, we're trying to bring in economic development. But I've also been around when we approved Rite Aid, the Chevron, the different places that we were so desperate. Look, we, we plowed under the hills because we were broke. That was a bunch of, I mean, you talk to some of the planning people. I still don't know how that happened. I know, actually, I do know how it happened. I know the staff that was involved. We lost everything going to Costco because of staff mistakes. So we're supposed to sit here and look at some designs that we all know aren't right. We don't, we don't want to point fingers because the Planning Commission people are our friends. But obviously, there is a problem with this particular project. I don't know what it, I suspect I know what it is. But I think we need quickly to meet with the Planning Commission and make sure they understand what their responsibility is. The conversation you and I are having now should have been the one that happened in planning. We need to turn this thing down.
Right, and that's, and that's what I'm getting at, Kevin. But if we don't have these conversations, it doesn't happen. The other piece of this for me is I really feel like when our general plan is done, a lot of this will go away. And so maybe like we talk about a multi-pronged approach where we have a meeting with Planning Commission, but that we, you know, push on the general plan as much as we can. And we make sure that the general plan is exactly what we want, right? Because that's ultimately where the buck stops, is with that general plan.
I'm hearing that we're basically doing a lot of rewriting on the, on the general plan, which really makes me nervous.
But we, again, we have to get, that has to be right. There's no options, correct? So.
Bad for the developer. I really do. Because they were, they were sort of strung along. I, I, there's a part of me that wants to, you know, approve the site plan. But I, I just don't like the, you know, that what they consider architectural elements are silhouettes. Those are not architectural elements. So I get nervous about those. I'd rather have plants there or something. And the 10 feet is very close, you know? Or I'd rather have 3D art.
Right, but, so if we go back to the general plan discussion and we think about some of the things that were proposed and/or kind of discussed in that, some of the discussions in that was moving the stuff closer to the street so people could see it, so they could engage, and it would draw them in. Those were discussions we had on Sixth Street and the general plan. So like the 10-foot does not bother me. So like, the 10 foot does not bother me at all, and you think about, and I know it's not 10 feet, but Deep Barrel, you see people on that lawn and in fellowship and social time, on Sixth Street all the time. And so, for me, the 10 feet is not an issue. And I know we had the discussion last time, like, I made the comment, I thought, to a certain extent, they were trying to mirror what was across the street, and I still stand by what I said, because I went back again, after you said, no, 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 Robin, I went back and looked at what was across the street with what was being proposed by the developer, and with the exception of some facade-type stuff, it's very, very similar. So, and again, that's my, my personal, I guess, design style or interpretation, but you know, I think there's a difference in, we're looking at western, we're looking at agrarian, we're looking at all of these things. And the pieces and components are just, they're different. And I think we're trying to mix the two. And that's why I just go back to, if, if the developer's willing to work with us, that, you know, we try and do that and get this done, people are coming into Norco, that's the first thing they see, and I feel like this project will, it will complete that, that entryway, and make it a nicer place.
If we hadn't spoken up, I don't think it would have. I think we would have had a strip mall with some pretty modern tchotchkes on it. And with, with sort of some silhouettes and things trying to make it look, I think it's getting closer now. And I agree with you, I think they want to work with us. The difference between Deep Barrel is, that's, the front of that building from the trail is from here probably to that one.
Right, and I, and I said that in my statement.
This is 10 feet.
Right, but you're gonna...
About it being close.
I'll go back to the discussion on the general plan. Part of, again, making things walk, walkable, getting people engaged and involved, was pushing it closer to the street, so they can see what's there.
Except that they're, except that they're buildings, that's my concern.
May I?
Lisette?
You know, just, just to recap, I think one of the, the biggest problem that we've had is also, you know, our general plan is really old, right? So this is hence why it's getting updated at this time. When somebody says, please go down Sixth Street, you have Sixth Street, you could go through every single building, and somebody could argue that each item, well, this is western to me. Some people love those silhouettes, they're like, I love that, that's western. You talk to somebody else, nope, that's hokey, that looks like frontier land, you know, so that's where the disconnect is. And with the general plan and, you know, the planning and the entire community development department, you know, they go through every single application. You know, I always say I feel bad for Alma, because of every, every single thing that goes through her desk. So, we are, we are committed to meet with the developer, to ensure that we've addressed, you know, Alma takes great notes on exactly what your concern is, what your concern is. And in trying to make it so that it meets the goal of getting that development in to look how we want Norco to look.
Well, I have a couple of comments that, and yes, I agree with you, our general plan is older. But even our current land use element addresses some of these conditions that maybe we shouldn't have gotten this far down the road. But I'm recalling that with our last meeting that we had, and I agree, we should have another joint meeting with planning commission. But the last time we met with planning, it was at the beginning of this new general plan. And our direction was to planning to start thinking forward, okay, with a lot of the conversations we were having at that time. Don't fall back to the old ways, start looking forward with your decisions. And I think possibly, there's a failure there with planning commission, not, not talking staff here.
And, and I think that's where it's hard, because they have these standards, but then they know the conversations that were had at the general plan, where it's like, no, now we want all the buildings up front parking in the back, you know, so that they could have those, you know, congregate in the front area. And so I think that's, that's part of now what's happening.
Which tells me it's time to meet again and get on the same page.
Correct, and, and until we get that general plan, you know, finalized and those ordinance changed, it's...
My concern is, though, the general plan, we'll be lucky to see it by the end of this year.
That's the goal.
That's the goal, but there's like 8 more months to deal with, so, you know, don't want to do this again. Alma. So I appreciate the change in conditions that you added, I'd like to make one change, that whatever number that was, 80 something on the block wall.
Oh, yes.
It's just a tiki, tiki-tac thing. When you do your condition, this, it's condition number nine on trash enclosures. You always call out a decorative masonry block. Or you call it masonry decorative block, I'm fine with that. Just add the word decorative to condition 82.
Okay.
So on the perimeter, site walls that were not just using cheap old precision block, that it's either split face colored, whatever, that is also decorative.
Decorative block?
Yep.
On both sides, or just one side?
On your site wall, condition.
But on both sides of the wall, or just the, whatever's...
That's your call.
Okay.
What's the other side facing?
It's residential.
Yeah.
And, you know, we don't, okay, I got you.
I'm ambivalent to that, that would be, I'd, I'd say that's your call.
Okay.
If it's exposed to the public on both sides, you know what to do on that. So Colin, then my question back to earlier, was if the applicant can speak, so my question to the applicant is, does the applicant accept all these changed conditions of approval? And if that's okay, that's the question I'm asking you. No, all these conditions that have been changed. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. So any other further discussion? You guys are gonna have to make a decision on the site plan, I think.
Can I ask the applicant a question?
Yes.
So, would you be willing to move it back 30 feet, or in your opinion, do you think that even if it is 10 feet away, do you think it'll feel kind of claustrophobic, too close to the trail?
Just for clarification purposes, the code, your building code in Norco incentivizes western design by giving developers that 10-foot setback. So that is what is written in the building code and which drove the design. When you don't, when you push the setback 30 feet, you don't have enough parking spaces to meet the requirements of the, of the development. So it doesn't pencil out.
Can you, can you, when you're working with Alma, can you just make the buildings, and right now, it's just a lot of glass, you know, if you can make them, break it up a little bit, and break, just break the buildings up, so they're a little bit interesting? Because I personally, when I think of the, the silhouettes, I don't look at the one on the side of the grocery outlet. I look at the ones in the parking lot that nobody seems to see, and they're just cheesy looking. And I also know they won't be there in 10 years, they'll deteriorate, and so it's the building I'm most concerned about. So if you'll work with Alma and just make sure that it just doesn't look like a building, you know what I'm saying? It's got some architectural design to it, but the parking is a consideration that I hadn't considered, so I'm glad you, you answered the question.
No problem, and as you've seen, I'm more than welcome to, to all your design feedback, and I've tried to incorporate.
Yeah, no, you're doing a great job. I still don't know what to do with the dormers, I don't know.
Let me throw this out at you. You know, Robin mentioned agrarian, okay? And then you'll say western, and just to further confuse the whole issue, I look at it as agrarian equestrian. And you can look it up, it's an architectural term, okay, it's not made up. And, but it, all of this, that, you know, we, we hear this in the public all the time, it's gotta look western. Nobody can define western, and it all falls back to agrarian. And I think with Kevin, Alma's gonna reach out to you, this is my understanding, and I'm not gonna be making comments about dormers or anything, I've looked at all these elevations and I'm tiki-tac stuff also, but I think that's the opportunity to just work with staff and give staff the clear direction.
You know, and working through the general plan, actually, it's, 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 western is a misnomer, and we, we know that. It's more of a, it's a, we've come up with a term, I can't remember what she came up with, but it's, we actually have five major architectural styles in the city of Norco, and they all tie to the agrarian lifestyle. So, but I mean, you know, I'm okay now, once I understand the parking, and as long as I know that those buildings, I am just worried it's gonna look like a fort. And I, I don't want that, I want it to be welcoming, as welcoming as possible, so.
Also, I, I know you don't like the cutouts, but I really do. I think that Stagecoach is pretty cool, but...
It's subjective.
Okay?
So...
I do like them.
Alma, the back area, just to be clear, so with that area at the back, where they're talking about putting another building or something, is there room to park back there?
Well, that's dependent on whatever they propose there, if it's like a thousand square foot, let's, for example, if you take the average of the suites or the building that, the suites that are there, it's about, you know, roughly 1,200 square feet, give or take. They can plot it, but they'd have to provide the required parking, which in that case would be, like, six parking spaces more. So, but, but the layout has to be approved by the planning commission, that area in the back, that has to be approved.
So the real question in terms of the thinking in the future, what we would prefer is to have probably a business or something people would want to go to. So is it worth forcing a setback, or is it better to sort of hold out for the 10 feet? And maybe get a building and ensure that they will have parking for that building, is that a correct?
Yeah, well, again, the, the, the project has been conditioned, that any development in the back has to go back to the planning commission to review layout. So, speaking to leave more room, you know, in that area, it just makes sense to keep the 10-foot setback, and I think that's what, if I am correct, yeah.
I mean, in other words, I'd rather have a building generating some kind of income, or a place for people to visit, as opposed to doing what normally would be our setbacks.
In my opinion, yes, it would provide more flexibility in that area.
I'm good with that, I'm, I'm good, I'm glad I asked the question.
And Kevin, that, that future building pad, the parking requirement stands alone. That pad has to provide its own parking.
Will they have enough parking?
It's all dependent on the size of the building.
Size of the building.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Okay, anything else? Then I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Okay, so, I'm gonna assume your emotion is to adopt resolutions 2025-15 and 2025-16 approving site plan 2022-01 and conditional use permit 2022-02.
Yes.
Okay.
Modification to condition 82.
Correct. Have a motion second?
Please vote.
And motion passes with Councilmember Sullivan voting no.
Thank you, Dana, appreciate it. I'm sure you guys will get it all worked out with staff. All right. City Council, Staff Communications, City Clerk, I know you have something.
Just a reminder that the annual recruitment is open for boards and commissions. We do have three seats that are terming on Measure R, one for Parks and Rec Commission, one for Planning Commission, and two on the Historic Preservation and Agriculture Commission. The recruitment will be open through May 22 at 6:00 PM. We will close all applications at that time. I will be going out into the community, I'm already scheduled to meet, go to the Chamber of Commerce to speak about the recruitment, and also, I'm going to the Eat Center to two of their education nights, so I can speak to the community that is there and do some recruiting there. If you have other suggestions on maybe where you'd like me to show up and do some education on recruitment, I'll be happy to do that, just get ahold of me, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Sam? Amanda Hamilton? Colin?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Lisette? Mr. Bowen? Amanda, everybody did awesome over the weekend, all your people were phenomenal. Working with them, Patrick was awesome. And I wasn't trying to slam you, as far as my statement earlier about the planning department, I just think that we have our opinions, and you get directions, and if you don't have somebody you can go talk to, like Kevin or Greg, it's really hard to think what's in our head, so I apologize, but thank you. And that's it. Robin?
Just wanted to say thank you to city staff for a good horse week, and all the volunteers that gave their time, and hopefully, everybody's rested and recovered from horse week, which really isn't a week. And then also, just wanted to let my colleagues know, I will not be at the June 4 council meeting due to a contractual obligation at work that evening, so.
Yes, I also wanted to thank everybody involved with horse week, including all the city staff. It was so much fun, it was just a lot of fun, just really wanted to thank everyone. And then also, I have two items that I would like to be agendized for future discussion. One of which is the setback reductions based on western architecture for C4 properties, and the other being equestrian access and horse tie-up standards in new and future commercial developments. Since there aren't any standards, I think there, there should be, so. Yes, do we, I'm sorry. Yes, may I make a motion to agendize that, please?
Yes, I have that, I need a second. Sorry, I'll just call for a vote. Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowen? Councilmember Bash? Mayor Pro Tim Grendmeyer? And Mayor Newton?
You're the tiebreaker.
You two, you're the tiebreaker.
Not at this time.
And motion fails at this time.
I wanted to see if we might want to discuss building sizes in residential ag areas, sizes of buildings. I know we have 40% lot coverage, but with the recent application, there was a large building that I just wonder if we might want to look at. I don't know how we do it, limiting the size of a building that's a non-resident.
In what area?
In the A1 areas, R1 areas. In other words, you, for example, we just had a large project that wanted to come in, double the size of the barn. And I'm just wondering if we should look at building sizes for certain uses. I don't know how we do it, but I'm just wondering if we should discuss it.
Let me say this. It's just I don't know what our schedule is coming up. That, I really don't know how you could restrict it. 40% lot coverage is pretty gracious. And the only, and we've looked at, or I've looked at this over the years, the only other thing you could do is reduce lot coverage to 25% and build whatever you want. It's the only thing I can think of that would ever work. But we can't have a discussion about that now.
I mean, if it's something people don't want to discuss, they want to wait till the next one comes along, and then they don't stop, and they sue us. I mean, it is a consideration. It is something we probably need to plan for.
Make a motion.
Well, I make a motion that, I'm not sure how to do it, to look at a size of building in the A1 area.
It's residential.
Residential, well, A1 residential, yes. R1, A1. But I don't know what that would be. I mean, no. We have 40% lot coverage. But, yeah, go ahead. Alma?
Average is the underlying in, be it a residential home or any use that's conditionally permitted. The thing about the conditionally permitted, you do have the discretion to require it to come smaller for it to fit into the community. So just a thought.
But if it's a church?
Same thing.
You have the discretion to limit the size?
With a conditional use permit, correct me if I'm wrong, Colin, but I think to make it compatible?
I don't think so.
You do. Churches have relupa. So when we make discretionary calls on a land use decision that involves a First Amendment religious use, then we run into relupa. But you can still do it if we can show it's narrowly tailored to serving a government interest, as Alma was saying. There's another way to go about limiting the total size of a building is what we can do is we can say that no assembly use can be of a certain size. Say, whatever the magic number is, 10,000 feet, 20,000 feet. That way, we're not calling out a church use specifically, which is singling out a First Amendment use. But it would apply to all assemblies, whether it was a movie theater, a church, you know, a Boy Scout amphitheater, whatever is, an assembly would have to be a certain size. Or you could say all buildings. All buildings in these zones have to be smaller than some amount. And then that's the constraint. So we can do that.
Or another option can be, and correct me if I'm wrong, also, non-residential uses that are conditionally permitted.
That's what I had in mind.
Yeah, that, I don't know if you can look at it from that angle, because, you know, there's a whole list of conditionally permitted uses, which are typically non-residential. And maybe you could look at that category, and that could be a possibility, too.
Kevin, or, and...
And I'm not married to it. If you guys don't want to discuss it, fine.
No, I'm just thinking, is this something Planning Commission should work on first before council?
It could be appropriate.
I'm good with that. I just think we need to prepare a little better for the future. And then that also means that if somebody decides they want to do a certain project in town, they know exactly what they're gonna walk into, and they're not gonna get, you know, they're not gonna run into the same saw, the sawmill that others have. So, yeah. Can we direct the Planning Commission to look at it?
Come forward with your recommendations. So...
Yep, that's all I have.
I'd be good with that. Okay, wrapping up. Amanda, Pike's Peak Park, you, your staff, you guys knocked it out of the proverbial park. And we've needed a win for quite a while. So I'm glad that you and your staff and all staff delivered. So thank you again. You're welcome. Anything else? Word adjourned. Thank you all.